I am going to do my best to run through this relatively quickly so that I'm not killing you guys with PowerPoint. But I did think it would be helpful to talk about some of the challenges that... Can I have everybody mute? Maybe mute everybody? Thanks. Some of the challenges that customers that we're talking to are discussing with us as we look at changes in the way businesses are operating today in this kind of post-COVID world. We're going to talk a little bit about collaboration and security primarily with Microsoft Business Premium, which is one of the licenses that we think is a great solution for customers, both small and midsize. And then we're going to talk about some new features, primarily Microsoft Defender for Business, which is being added into the Business Premium suite of licenses. And then lastly, we're just going to touch a bit on cost and complexity and why it makes sense for a lot of customers to move over to Business Premium if they're on a lighter SKU or maybe office, maybe on E3 licensing. We can help them understand why Business Premium is a good license to consider. Okay. See if I can get this to move. Here we go. Okay, so we look at sort of the good old days, right? This slide's just giving you a visual example of how we used to work. Super simple, behind a firewall, people were collaborating by walking over to an office or driving out to meet customers. It's a very different business landscape today. As you can see, it looks more like this, right? And this is the new normal that businesses are having to contend with. And so one thing that I think is important to note is we are hearing that, and this is a Gartner survey, 74% of companies are shifting to either some or most employees staying remote permanently. Right, so we've got employees working from home, we've got employees working on personal devices, and we've got data flowing from, you know, a cloud or servers, and it just increased the security risk. And all these things are our new normal, and this is what businesses are really having to contend with today. And so it poses the question, or several questions, that come up, I think, pretty consistently when we're talking to companies. And one, how do we do distributed work better? When we say distributed work better, we mean how do we make sure that employees that are remote are staying connected to our culture? It's a big deal for C-levels. They really, especially with the great resignation happening and so much turnover, they're really struggling to find out how do we allow distributed work, embrace our new normal, if you will, but also make sure that it's a good experience for our employees? How do they collaborate with the rest of the team? How do we train them and ramp them up? I mean, all these things they've been struggling with over the last couple of years. We've had some good success. Remote work has worked for a lot of businesses, but they still want to improve the employee experience. Security. With all of the recent events that are happening in the world today, this just could not be more topical. And we're now contending with data moving across cloud applications, SaaS applications, and personal devices. So particularly for small and midsize customers, security is a paramount concern. And I'm sure you guys are probably hearing that from your customers, so we're going to talk a lot about that today. And then how do we reduce our costs? And we also, you know, we can talk about how we reduce costs with comparing products and licensing, but I also want to touch on how do we reduce costs by reducing the risk of getting phished or hacked? We hear a lot of stories from customers and prospective customers about a spoofed email where they've sent money to the wrong company, and those things can have really big costs for businesses. Or ransomware attacks, you guys have all heard of customers that have dealt with that. Those have really, really big implications where there's just increased insurance costs or if they actually have to pay those bad actors, if you will. I have personally been talking to customers for eight years now about the value of having a good security, good security policies in place. And I think this year and last year, more than ever, companies are really starting to listen. What I used to get all the time was companies saying, "Oh, it's not going to happen to me." Right, they're only after the big companies. They want Home Depot, they want Target, they're not coming after me. But what we do know now and what we can prove is that ransomware attacks, one, are up by 300%, but more than 50% of those are targeted at small businesses. So that stance of "it's not going to happen to me" really no longer works. And I think businesses are starting to see that. They are dealing with these phishing emails, they're dealing with the ransomware attacks, they're hearing about it from other business owners, and they're really starting to listen and drive that conversation. They're asking me now, "How do I get protection? What can I do?" The other big challenge for them is, you know, they're facing the same kind of hacking threats that enterprise businesses are facing. Many of them have a fraction of the resources and tools at their disposal to protect their businesses. So we want to offer some of that information to you today to help have that conversation and let them know that there are some things available that can help them maintain a secure environment. And then just lastly, the cost of a data breach is high. I mean, this slide is saying an average of $108,000, and that's again a Gartner number. I mean, I've seen it across the board, but it is really expensive for businesses to have to contend with getting, with a breach coming through into their environment. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about Business Premium. That's the boxed offering all the way to the right on our slide deck today. Business Basic is just the very basic offering, if you will. Six bucks per user per month, and you're getting the cloud services for Microsoft. If you move over to Standard, you also add on the desktop applications, which a lot of customers are using, right? The Word, Excel, PowerPoints. Premium is where we also add on that security layer at $22 per user per month. And these are retail prices. And so that's what I want to dive into is, you know, some of the challenges and solutions that are offered when we offer this whole suite of products and move customers. If you find customers on Business Basic, how do we have a conversation to move them to Premium? Or if they're on Standard, move them up to Premium? And why that's a good decision for them? Okay. So the big one, the first challenge that we're going to talk about, and it's a big one, is the collaboration piece. Right, there's a lot of businesses struggling with that, as we kind of already touched on. And it can be a challenge to have a solution where people can collaborate in real time so that they can get what they need quickly. Right, if you think about, you know, somebody involved in a large sales cycle, and they might need to talk to their finance team, or they might need to collaborate with marketing on a slide deck. You know, you used to be able to run over to the marketing office, say, "Hey, can I pull you away from what you're doing because I need this presentation in 20 minutes?" Salespeople are terrible about that. But those types of things can happen now using the Teams platform where you can chat, you can video conference, you can pull up documents, and you can work together even if you're not in the same room. And so I think if you're having a conversation with a customer and their challenge is collaboration, and they don't have a collaboration platform, Teams is a great way to help solve that challenge and bring people together from disparate locations. Another big challenge that your customers might be wanting to chat with you guys about is unauthorized access to work data. And so really, this is about how do we make sure that the identity, the user that's coming into our corporate environment is the right person? And that they're not just have had their credentials stolen, and it's a hacker out there posing as one of our employees who's going to steal some of our sensitive data or take our personal identifying information? Oops, I'm sorry, went too far. I can bring that back. My PowerPoint's being a little wonky. I'll send this to you guys, too. Okay. So essentially, with multi-factor authentication and conditional access, you can apply policies to the end-user identity that will allow end-users to access environments, but first validate that they're in the right country. Or if they're on a device that is unfamiliar or not part of the corporate network, we can imply policies that say they cannot enter the environment. So there's lots of policies that we can put in place using conditional access. And then multi-factor is really a baseline that we say kind of like a foundational security policy that anybody that has cloud applications should have. Because again, it's not difficult today to have credentials compromised, and you probably see it quite a bit. And so a simple way to thwart attackers or hackers that have possession of stolen credentials is just to enable MFA. This stat says 99% of identity attackers are thwarted simply by using multi-factor authentication. What I hear when I talk to customers about multi-factor authentication is, "But Tina, I do not want my users to have to authenticate every single time they log into our environment. It's too disruptive, they don't like it, they complain." And that's where conditional access comes in behind MFA to have some of those policies. So we can say, "Well, fine, if they're logging in on their company device and they're, you know, in the same location as where our business is or where we think they should be, we're not going to ask them to authenticate. We're going to say, "All right, you can come in because everything looks good." But if somebody using their credentials is trying to log in outside of the United States, that to us is going to be a cause for concern. And so we're just going to say, "Hey, let's have them authenticate using MFA, have a secondary form of ID, right, like a password or a PIN code. And once they can pass that second test, we're now going to be comfortable. Okay, they must be on vacation, but they need to access some work information. We'll go ahead and let them in." Another big challenge out there for a lot of companies is phishing attacks. We do now know that end-users tend to be the weakest link in any security kind of policy or chain. And so, and to their defense, really phishing attacks have gotten so much more sophisticated. A phishing attack, I'm sure you guys are all aware, but it's really just an email that it looks very much like a legitimate email, and it might be coming from a company that use Apple, they use Microsoft, I mean, they use big-name companies. They've got the logo, they look really good nowadays. And they're going to ask for credentials to verify something. Maybe Amazon saying, "Hey, we need to, you need to check the status of your order, login." And the document or the page doesn't load. The end-user forgets they've even done anything, they go on their merry way, but what's happened is their credentials were phished. And now, again, why we want multi-factor authentication? Somebody has their username and password, can access the environment if they don't have multi-factor authentication and can go ahead and wreak havoc in the business. Phishing has gone up exponentially, 250% increase in phishing emails. That's just ones that were detected. I think that's because it actually works a lot of the time, and they're able to get the information that they're looking for. And so there's a lot of third-party solutions to this, we see. We see Mimecast. But Microsoft, included in the Business Premium suite of products, does have a defense built in that extends across the suite, so not just mail. It extends to Teams, it extends to OneDrive, and it provides protection against malicious links. So SafeLinks will scan the mail, and when the user goes to click on it, if it is a malicious link, it'll show up a warning sign and not allow them access into the, not allow them to click into the link. And then it's also scanning attachments. And if it's opening those attachments that are coming in, in a sandbox-type environment, and if they are deemed malicious, it'll deliver the message to the end-user, but when they go to open the attachment, the attachment will not open. So there is defenses against these phishing, trying to protect the end-users from themselves and stop them from sharing credentials or opening attachments that are unsafe. Another really big concern today for businesses is accidental data loss for personal identifying information or sensitive information. Businesses have sensitive data that they are in charge of. It could be credit card, could be employee social security numbers. The statistic is about 80% of businesses handle personal identifying information data. And so with that becomes the very real need to protect that information. So there's a lot of concern around how do we make sure that that information isn't ending up on a thumb drive and being handed over to somebody that's going to, you know, not do the right thing with that information? How do we make sure that somebody doesn't accidentally email out that information? You know, and then have, now we as a business are liable because we didn't secure it and stop it from happening. And that could, again, be like a social security number or credit card information. So we can, using the Microsoft Business Premium Azure Information Protection capabilities, we can actually label data. We can label data as highly confidential, and then we can set policies that will encrypt any data that carries that label. We can protect the data at the file level. So this is important because if a person, let's just say, an employee accidentally emails or goes to email it, then the information protection will stop and say, "Hey, you should encrypt." Or we can automatically encrypt, maybe don't give your employee the option. We just set a policy that says this data is going to be automatically encrypted. So right away, we know that that data is not going to be opened by somebody who is not the right person because once it's encrypted, they're going to have to have the password or the right set of conditions to open that information. We can also protect it by saying, you know, even if it's downloaded to a personal device, because the protection sits with the information, if it's uploaded and it's not an employee of the company trying to access the information, the document essentially is going to become useless, you're not going to be able to open it. So we can start adding protections at the data layer to help protect the companies themselves from lawsuits against leakage of personal identifying information. These animations are kind of a little slow. There we go. And this is just showing you that the, on the backend, these are some of the ways that, these are some of the kind of out-of-the-box classifications that you can select to protect information, sensitive information. So again, it's social security numbers, it's credit card numbers. All of these are areas where we can help prevent leakage of that sensitive data. We are also seeing an increase in bring-your-own-devices. I used to have a lot of customers that didn't allow that at all, specifically because they did not want what we call shadow IT. But what it is really is, you know, once you have data and you're accessing it through a cloud application, you can save it to a personal device, and the business no longer has control or even knowledge of where that data resides. That could be something like personal identifying information. It could be something like client information for somebody who's leaving a job. Maybe they are taking things we don't want them to take. Or if you think about, you know, companies that have developing new products, they can work years on their new products, their whole business relies on being first to market, and if somebody leaks those trade secrets or takes those trade secrets, that's a big deal. So having conversations with C-levels about, you know, their intellectual property usually can engender some really interesting conversations. It's a big concern for them that that information that is proprietary to their business doesn't leave their business. And so how do we stop stuff like that? We can do that with application protection. There we go. It's also included in Business Premium, of course. And what this allows us to do is say, "Hey, we are not going to allow any work data to be saved on personal applications." Right, all work documents, all work attachments are only going to be saved on authorized work shares. And our business has authorized OneDrive for Business for that purpose. And so if a user tries to, and you know, sometimes this could be accidental. They tried to save something to their, you know, G-Drive. The software on the backend, Azure Intune App Protection, is going to say, "Nope, sorry, that's unauthorized," and just stop them from downloading or saving data. So this is, this is a great solution to keep IT in control of data specifically that belongs to the organization. And then lastly, we're going to talk about ransomware. This is a big one. We see this quite a bit, and fortunately, there are solutions like backup solutions that can help if people are getting ransomwared. But essentially, ransomware is the, is when a hacker attempts to use targeted malware to encrypt important files and then demand payment to have them unlocked. 80% of small to midsize businesses are concerned about ransomware with really good reason. This is devastating to a business. Lots of times, even if they have a backup solution in place to protect them, it is very time-consuming to restore all of their files or find files and restore them from a pre-infected state. And so the better we can protect companies against this type of threat, or so the more we can protect companies against this type of threat, the better. And so this is where Microsoft Defender comes into play. Microsoft Defender is a EDR, so it's an endpoint detect and response. It's a little bit different when we think about endpoint. A lot of times, traditional IT thinks about antivirus. And so I just wanted to touch really quickly on the difference between the two. Antivirus is software that sits on the endpoint, and it has all of the security policies in it to protect against known viruses. And then what happens is it's almost like whack-a-mole where a hacker will come, they'll see the antivirus, they'll exploit a weak point in the software. The antivirus company will come behind them, see that it's been exploited, build a patch to fix it, and then distribute it to all of their customers. And so every 30 days, everybody gets the latest patch, and then they can feel somewhat safe for another 30 days until the next patch comes down. But the problem with that is there are these vulnerabilities that are being exploited. So there are a number of customers that aren't getting protected. And so it's getting harder and harder to keep up just because of the number of bad actors and threats out there. And so what a solution that has an endpoint detect and response can do is it can respond in real time. And so that can mean a huge difference for the business. And it's using technologies like machine learning and artificial intelligence to detect anomalous behavior, so anything that's out of the ordinary. And then it can, it can shut down the computer, it can alert IT, so you can have a real-time response to anything that shouldn't be happening in the environment. And this can help tremendously protect against ransomware attacks for customers. So this is a great solution that is now included in Business Premium as of March 1st. It's enterprise-grade protection, it's out-of-the-box, pretty easy to use, and it's a cost-effective solution for businesses to step up their game from just a traditional antivirus to an endpoint response and detect solution. The other thing I wanted to touch on is customers have a lot of different operating systems in their environments, so that's okay. It doesn't have to be just Windows that we can protect, we can protect Mac, we can protect Android, so Apple. So they don't have to be concerned if they're not using all Windows devices, these technologies can still help. And then just to put a bow on security, again, I have a lot of these conversations. Customers come to me and say, "Tina, we want to have better security." And I always respond with, "Well, I mean, don't we all, right? That's a really big topic, where are your concerns?" Because we can apply security to the identity or to the user if that's an issue or an area of concern. And that's what we talked about earlier, using technologies like MFA and conditional access. We can apply security at the device level, right? So using technologies like Defender, BitLocker, which will encrypt a stolen or lost laptop, making it essentially useless. Again, we can apply security at the application layer. And so we're looking at Defender, right, to protect against your phishing attempts. That's, that's safe links, safe attachments, data loss prevention technologies. And then, of course, at the document layer, that Azure Information Protection that can revoke access or classify documents and encrypt them automatically. So there's a lot of different layers. The cool thing is that Business Premium has all of those, but I would definitely dig in when you're talking to customers about security instead of trying to throw everything at them and find out what specifically they're concerned about, and then start addressing it from there. And then you can kind of expand if they're asking additional questions and want to continue to learn more. And then lastly, what we tend to see quite a bit of when we're talking to customers about this type of solution is that they've already started addressing this with a lot of disparate solutions. Right, so they'll have some sort of advanced email protection like Mimecast. They'll have their own antivirus protection. They might have a endpoint detection and response. And so when you start taking all of these tools and putting a dollar number to them, then if Then if they're pushing back on the $22 per user per month. What they might find is that they're actually saving money because they can roll all of these solutions under one umbrella. And not only can that save them money, but it can also make it much easier for them to manage. Because now everything's across one platform. So it tends to get a little bit simpler in terms of management for them. Okay, I went through this quickly, but I really wanted to leave time so that we could have some questions and discussions. But just a quick recap. So again, when we're looking at solutions for collaboration, security. Microsoft 365 Business Premium, I will tell you, I think by far it's the best value. Out of all the licensing products and it's the one that I generally lead with when I'm talking to customers under three or around 300 seats and under. Because I just think they get so much value from it. And having the security tools, I think is really necessary in today's computing environment. And with that, SD, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Awesome, thank you, Tina. Yeah, you went over a lot of stuff, so thank you for that. I wanted to. Open it up now for any questions that anyone specifically had. Cause I know last week there were a few people, and I don't know if they're in this meeting right now. But they had specific questions and I wanted to open that up before we started any other type of discussion. Or I want to lead it in any other type of direction. So if anyone has questions who's attending as a guest from Managed Solution. The floor is open right now, it could either be off of what we talked about last week. What Tina went over or the study guide that that I sent out earlier this week. All right. Let me go ahead and. Let me share the study guide that I have, one second. Did everyone receive that who's attending, who? Who isn't a part of Managed Solution? Alrighty. One second, let me pull that up. Okay, cool, thank you. Did you have any questions regarding that? Anything on there, anything you wanted to go over specifically? Okay, cool, so let me go ahead and share the screen right now. Okie dokes, so this is, can everyone see this or is it too? Stretched out? We good?
We can see it.
Okay, awesome. All right, so based off of this, the study guide that we went over this week. I know that we wanted to focus on the collaboration solutions, which is the last section of the study guide. So it goes over. The capabilities of Microsoft 365. Windows as a service, WVD, Windows Virtual Desktop, which was actually a topic that we talked about last week. And then workplace analytics. And then the collaboration solutions is the last point that I know that we wanted to talk about. So Tina, I have a question for you regarding the collaboration solutions. So that is. Is that bundled, is that a part of business premium? And that's a part of what comes with that license?
Yeah, absolutely. When we talk about the collaboration solutions, we're talking about teams. We're talking about having the ability to chat, share documents in real time. So that's all a part of the business premium licensing.
Okay, awesome. Okay. So I was kind of like, I was leaving time for us to go over if anyone had any questions. So does no one have any questions at all? I think there's someone, are you trying to talk? Hang on one second. Christine, did you pop up? Nope, okay. Hey Dennis, do you remember the question that someone had last week? Was it regarding Express Route?
Yeah, SD, it was around Azure Express Route.
Okay. Tina, do you, do you know much about Azure Express Route?
Yeah, so. Customers who want a dedicated connection into an Azure environment. Are a good candidate to use an Express Route solution. Do we have any partners on the call today that sell Express Routes?
That's, I was trying to figure that out, if someone from last week wanted to talk about Express Route and if they're still here.
Doesn't seem like anybody does. That's not necessarily something that we would sell. We actually go out to our partner community to get pricing on Express Routes. But the purpose of them is to provide a dedicated, secure connection. Into your Azure environment, not, and. I generally, I haven't, I haven't had a ton of customers that need that. It tends to be some of the larger customers that are looking for that dedicated connection into Azure.
Okay. All right, very cool. All right, account managers, do you guys have any, anything to touch on regarding the study session that we've gone over ourselves?
About business premium, or you're talking about the study session?
Just, yeah, just about the collaboration and the solutions that. We've talked about and what you see out there when you're selling.
Seems like, I mean, with the business premium, I don't know, as I kind of touched on, but you know, a lot of the cool things about it. It's like the enterprise security mobility suite that you get with that. That makes a big difference, especially as, you know, companies with compliance factors, you know, security. Just leveraging those tools that come with that. In addition to having Microsoft Defender, like it's, it's a great opportunity to consolidate a lot of the vendors you're working with. And the technologies leveraging the features that come with that license, so. That's, that's something I want to add, it's just a very common with business premium that we usually recommend that route. So like if you're to the partners, if you know, you're working with customers, we will obviously assess what the license. Needs are for the, for your customers, but just something to be aware of when it comes to the options of the many options when it comes to licensing. So that's I just wanted to add. Why it's relevant.
No, thank you, Seth, that's great. And I know that we had a discussion earlier how business premium is, is always chosen. Over the E3 license, the Microsoft E3, and I know that I've seen that. A lot more and then that was touched on when we had our sales meeting this morning too, so. Yeah, I think licenses, licensing is always a big topic that comes up when Microsoft is even brought up. Especially in the channel. Do any, any of the partners that join, do you guys have any specific questions regarding licensing? And? Any issues that come up when? A customer comes to you and asks about licensing, whether they have Microsoft already or they're looking to. Get Microsoft licensing? Alrighty.
I think we're answering everybody's questions.
Yeah, I think so too. I think Tina was so thorough that. People don't have any questions, because last week there is, there's a ton of questions. So I want to make sure that I save enough time for everyone to, to get what they can out of this study session. Because of course, we're here to, to, to train on what. We think is most important when it comes to Microsoft products and their solutions. But we want to make sure that people are engaging and we're, we're giving you guys exactly what you need when it comes to. Giving you the ammo needed to go out there and, and help sell Microsoft. And yeah, that's about it. So there are no specific questions?
I like that message, today's Friday knowledge uptake is legendary. Funny. I, I just thought I would ask a question. I have two thoughts, since we just kind of have this open space to connect with our partners here. One thought is, obviously, if you guys are. In the business typically of selling Microsoft stuff or not. It's, I know we're kind of in the space of, I don't know what I don't know. So you may not even know the types of questions to ask, but I'm curious to know when you guys can post in the chat or verbalize like. Are there things that, like questions that have been coming up for you when you're out in the field? That maybe we can address today, maybe something that we haven't touched on here? I would love to hear about that, so if you want to either unmute yourself or post in the chat. Think back to any conversations or like little tiny questions that maybe you were asked that. You didn't dive down because, into because you didn't know how to, or weren't sure if you had a partner who did it. That has anything to do with Microsoft Cloud, prem, like desktop as a service, like anything. And then my other thought is, you know, when Tina spoke a lot about security. And I think that it could be difficult to have that conversation sometimes, depending on who your contact is you're talking to at a company. So I wanted to let you guys know this is something that we did in our study group, we covered in our study group internally. And I'll post it after I'm done talking here, but Microsoft does have these six pillars. That they refer to, and these are areas to talk up through when we're talking about security. But also talking about like connectivity and, and almost any part of IT. And those are identities, so Azure Active Directory, every person's identity within the company, how are those being handled? Devices individually, applications individually, so how are they being protected at the application layer? At the data layer, on the infrastructure layer, and then the network layer. So these are areas that I know that IT directors and IT managers think about all the time. That I wanted to let this group here know that. Just bring it, bring it to top of mind for everybody.
Thank you, Jess, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't see any questions coming in, so I'm not sure what conversations you guys are having out there about Microsoft.
Yeah, that's a big reason, oh, sorry, did you?
Oh, I was just going to ask if anybody would be willing to share from our partner attendees. If, if they are having conversations or if they're having any. Maybe obstacles starting those conversations. And how we might be able to help. Sometimes it's just. You know, we talked a lot about the technology today, but sometimes it's just talking about how do I even wade into that conversation? What's a good place to start? For me, a lot of the times I start with just asking them. One, if they use Microsoft in their environment. And then from there, asking about, you know, the different types of licensing. Or how they are purchasing their licensing are really easy ways to kind of wade into that licensing conversation. And that can kind of take you down the path of what the different products are included with the licensing.
Yeah, I don't think anyone has any questions. I think we can probably wrap this up early. I know that we have like about 10 minutes left. Again, I can. You know, give a few more, few more minutes or a minute just to, if anyone, you can ask a question in the chat. That's what happened last time, people were throwing in questions in the chat. Or you can just, you know, speak up. And if not, then we can go ahead and close this out a bit early. Any other comments from the account managers or anything from Tina?
I mean, I think we'll just.
SD and Tina, just for doing this. This is always good, I just love the, just going over the, the options here, the technologies that are included. And plus the business case, I mean, we're, everybody facing this pretty much, whether it's security, just a better way of doing things, collaboration.
Yeah, thanks Seth. We'll go ahead and send out the deck and the recording to everybody, so you guys have it. There are Microsoft kind of scenarios in that slide deck that they outline. I just wanted to talk more about my personal experience because it felt like it resonated a little bit better than their. Foe kind of trade wind company stories, but they're in there and I think they're helpful. Just when you guys are listening for these types of challenges from your customers, kind of when you're digging around and doing your discovery. It'll just give you cues on what challenges to listen for. And then kind of maps you back to what solution in the Microsoft licensing suite can help resolve those challenges. And again, if, if any of you want to talk more, you know, one to one with anybody on the team to dive deeper into this stuff, just let us know. We're happy to set up time to walk you guys through it individually too, I know it's a lot of information.
Awesome, awesome, thank you Tina, I appreciate you bringing the slide deck and. Giving us all that information and your experience, so very much appreciated. Again, like she said, I'll send out the study guide and any other follow up information that anyone needs. But I'll make sure it's sent out to you guys either today or first thing on Monday. And then again, we're having the study session, the third one next week, so it will be on another topic. I'll make sure that that information goes out. By either Monday or Tuesday, so you guys can look over the study guide, because there'll be another study guide. And you guys can come with any questions or comments and we're looking forward to seeing you next week. All right, bye everyone, happy Friday.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.